Well, you'll be happy to know my computer now says 7:00 PM.
Nope, mine doesn't.
Yep.
Okay. All right, I'd like to reconvene the meeting for the St. Mary's County Board of Education for Wednesday, August 28th, 2019. We will begin with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's see, may I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move approval of the agenda as presented.
Do I have a second?
My second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. I think you know, you'll start with you, the board reports.
All right, so on August 19th through SNAS, which is the St. Mary's Association of Student Councils, I volunteered at the literacy conference held at Lenartown High School. The event was attended by SMCPS staff and volunteers assisted with staffing the registration tables, giving directions in the halls, and assisting with setting up lunch. And then going off of that, I currently attend Lenartown High School and I'm a part of S2S, also known as student to student. And at Lenartown, we hosted a new student orientation on August 26th where we helped tour the new incoming students around the school to give them a sense of what their days would look like and help them ease the transition to the new school.
Well, I had the opportunity to go to new teacher orientation. And Ms. Bailey gave a speech, and of course, Dr. Smith and, you know, one of our county commissioners. But I have to say, Karen, you did a wonderful job. She talked about making history and she talked about, let's say, the state and history and, I don't know, like...
Hey, Ruth hit a 600.
Yeah.
Dirty Dancing came out.
And she encouraged the new staff that was there to make history and make this their home and that, you know, 20 years from now or 30 years from now that we look forward to them being there and making history as, you know, retiring and... But there was a lot of energy in the room and it was great to see, you know, some new faces and just a lot of excitement. So it was great to welcome the new staff because there were some new nurses in there who I got to go over and speak with, so that's exciting too.
I took a couple of weeks off, so I have no...
Well, thank you, Mrs. Weber. I did attend the new teacher orientation and it was, it was, there was a lot of excitement in the room. So I think it, everyone was pretty happy to be there. Once again, we've homegrown a lot of teachers, first-year teachers...
Oh, yeah.
This year, so that's really good.
That's good.
And of course, Dr. Smith gave a fabulous speech as well, very entertaining, as he had them all take a quiz, so everyone got to know a little bit more about themselves.
Absolutely.
And we do have, in addition to our charter school contingent over here on this side of the room, we do have some Boy Scouts that are here working on their communications and citizenship in the community badge. So I know Mrs. Washington was talking to them earlier. I was a little late. Thank you for appeasing me. It was Margaret Brent's sixth grade open house.
It was open house.
Just gonna throw down the gauntlet. It was probably the most efficient open house that I've been to in my years here at St. Mary's County Public Schools.
Carry that back to Principal Adwords.
Well, I did talk to Mr. Peeler on the way out. So, I mean, we were, started at 5:30. We were out at 20 after 6:00 and there was 150 kids there. They split the sixth grade because there's 360 incoming. So, look out, Margaret Brent.
Yeah.
Anyway, so we have Jonah Shalou, correct? David and Douglas Abbott, and they are all from Troop 303 in Valley Lee. So you guys picked a good meeting because I don't think it'll be too boring. I'm sorry.
Douglas.
Oh, Douglas Abbott. Douglas and David Abbott got both of them. So, and we will talk about the code of conduct, so that is something that you will also be hearing about on the first day of school.
Yes.
So, it's a good meeting to attend. Let's see, I think that's about all I have. Mrs. Washington, your turn.
I want to thank SMCPS and all the various departments who worked so hard during the summer and months before so that we can have a good and smooth, happy, safe opening first day of school, which is next week. People always wonder, what do you do over the summer? Do you take a break? Absolutely not. Everybody's working really hard. Every chair, every desk, every floor, every window, everything is clean. Everything is done. The teachers have to strip their rooms and the schools are spotless. So many people work. The bus drivers are having training. Buses are inspected. Food services, they're doing their thing. Everyone is working. So we work hard over the summer. But I've been away for about a month and my mother passed away on August the 13th in Catonsville, Maryland, and she was in hospice care. So I spent my time with her. And I want to thank everybody for their prayers, the flowers, the cards, the e-messages, the meals, and those who made the trip all the way to Baltimore to my mother's home-going celebration. And it was a celebration. And I'm grateful for the journey that I spent with my mother. I feel honored and grateful that I had the time to spend with her. And she passed away peacefully at 88 years old. So I'm slowly transitioning to my new normal in my life and I'm taking the time that I need. As everybody say, you need to go through grief counseling and you have to take time. Don't rush the process because it's different for everyone. So that's what I'm doing. But I am so grateful for my board members, the school system, the citizens in the county. Several representatives from many churches in the county came and I just felt supported by a cocoon of love. And this is a great place to live, work, and play. And I'm glad I'm a part of this St. Mary's County family and the school system. I appreciate all of you, the ones who came, the ones who did things and the ones who prayed for me. And they were there for me in spirit. I really appreciate it. I felt really loved, so thank you.
I'm just gonna add, so during all of the discussions about your mother, if anyone has any doubt as to where Mrs. Washington gets her compassion and her outreach to anyone who needs help, clearly it is coming from her mother. So there were a number of people that got up to talk about Ms. Lucy, who was kind of a mother to every child that was in the neighborhood or anyone who needed help. I think we all really wanted to go hang out with your younger sister because she seemed a little, like she was a lot of fun.
She is a lot of fun.
So, but the apple certainly did not fall...
Thank you.
...all far from the tree.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And I aspire to be the kind of mother my mother was to me, to teach everybody to love everybody, respect everybody, treat everybody like you want to be treated, and do what you can to help people along the way. Just all that good stuff. So I appreciate my mom. So she lives in my heart and my mind forever. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you for being there. That was a long way to come from the mother county all the way up to Baltimore. That was a long way. And people say, wow, all those people from St. Mary's County, you must be loved.
We learned a lot about you.
I know.
Couple of years.
I know. And hey, those people were saying, my mother told me all about you four girls because she had four. And I said, what did she say?
So Mrs. Washington apparently is a great practical joker.
I am.
So, yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
More to come.
I am looking forward to the first day of school. The members of the board, along with staff, we divide and conquer. And we visit schools on the first day, walk around, see how things are going. It's a great way to start the day and the school year. And it's something that we do really to show how much we care about what's going on and so we can see for ourselves what's going on in the school. So I know we missed the charter school because you guys started the day of our last meeting.
Third meeting.
Yes, old head.
I'll see you next week. But we will be popping in, so, you know, please don't ever think you are forgotten because you are not. But Dr. Marr and I will be visiting at least seven schools and making our way around the, around the county. So lots of fun, looking forward to it and looking forward to a great next year of school.
Let's see, we had the Equity Task Force meeting on the evening after the last board meeting. That was really great. We have a town hall coming up in September. We'll be sending it on September 18th as a follow-up to kind of present publicly a lot of the work that we've been doing within that group. There is an article in The Enterprise today about Ms. Adrienne Delahunt, who works with Dr. Marr in spearheading that work. We, Dr. Marr and I, we got to go to the Patuxent Partner Internship Luncheon with all of the students who are in the Academy of, National Academy of Finance, talking about all the work that they did over the summer. We have a lot of students who do internships as part of their program over the summer and they really get some great experience. The, I did get to see Ms. Ori when we went to the literacy conference over at Lenartown. There she was, helping people navigate the maze that is Lenartown High School. Professor Ben Click from St. Mary's College gave the keynote. He did a very nice job. He was very funny and warm and welcoming and stressing how important it is to make sure that we are all thoughtful, literate citizens in the United States. New teacher orientation, that was great. But back to the literacy, we had 60 different presenters, all from, all of our staff members were presenting. We had over 250 participants, and that's before school started. New teacher orientation, we did welcome 119 teachers. That number is now up to 124 teachers and nurses and counselors home to St. Mary's County. There's a lot of things that are going on. Today was a professional development day for all of our staff throughout the county. I can't tell you just the depth of talent this system has for being able to really talk about what's instructional best practice, what's best for our kids. Everything and anything you could think of was covered today and will be covered throughout the school year. But we have a lot of people here and I just want to highlight one thing before we end because it's a really nice little piece of throughput. We have three students, Gianna Tillery from Great Mills High School, Sophia Williams from Chopticon High School, and Josh Wright from Lenartown High School. And they're in the TV production program, a video production program at the Forest Center. And as part of their third year, they're doing a video collection about be your best you, giving advice to kids as they go through the entire year. They did, we've, they've already posted one that was about how to make the most of open house. And so it's like a two-minute video about open house. And this video is how to, your first day back at school, right? First day back at school.
Yeah.
They're gonna do topics throughout the entire year. They're gonna do one-hour lunch. I've already seen it. They've already got that one done, talking about how to use your one-hour lunch to your best advantage. They're gonna talk about the Career Center and what that does, College Fair. They're gonna do attendance with SAM the Dog. SAM is School Attendance Matters, right?
Yes.
SAM, SAM the Dog. We're rolling on a mascot, SAM the Dog. That's gonna be a lot of fun. Stuff on PSATs. They've got, they've, every single two weeks, pretty much, they've got a new topic where they're gonna be putting out a video. So we'll be pushing it out on social media. These people are gonna be, they're already stars. They're incredibly charismatic people on, on video. So let's watch this one and I'd love to hear what you think.
Hi, Gianna.
How was your summer?
Good.
How was yours? Great. Hey, Josh.
Hey, what's up, guys?
How was your summer?
It's pretty good.
Are you ready for the first day of school?
I'm ready.
All right, are you guys ready for the first day of school? I'm Gianna from Great Mills.
I'm Josh from Lenartown.
And I'm Sophia from Chopticon.
And today we're gonna be talking about the first day of school for you freshmen. Now, are y'all nervous? Because you shouldn't be. The first day of school isn't that scary. You just need to know that everyone's on your side and helping you to succeed. Like going through the hallways. If you don't know where your homeroom is, just ask. Everyone's more than helpful. And it's not a big deal if you're a few seconds late for class. You're still finding your way around the building. And try to get involved in school. Try to get involved in sports and clubs during your one-hour lunch.
Make friends. It's okay to introduce yourself, tell them your name, you know, what school they went to before. First day of school is a good day to make friends and get into groups and, you know, people that are like you. You meet different people.
And if you feel that you're getting lost, just ask the teacher where your class is or we have maps all around the schools at every school.
If you don't see a teacher nearby, you can ask someone. And the seniors or whoever's higher up in the school who's been there for a few years longer than you have can also help you around the school.
And don't be a non-joiner. Participate in class icebreakers or get to know your other peers' names or just get to know the teacher and talk to them. There's plenty of opportunities for you to show yourself and to show who you really are and who you want to be in the school year.
Sometimes you can volunteer in class. If the teacher is asking a specific question, it's good to raise your hand and to get yourself out there. A lot of kids don't like doing that, but the minute you do it, you feel a lot more comfortable and then that actually opens the doors to make new friends, too.
And you guys have a great first day of school and go out there and be the best you.
They helped you through the entire year, Gianna, Sophia, and Josh.
Is that going out on kid's social media or parent's social media?
Well, we're gonna put it up on all the YouTube, Gram, Facebook, something, something, something.
Twitter.
Twitter. Yeah, yeah. And then we'll see if they pick it up. I mean, the only thing we don't, the only thing we don't do as a system is we don't do Snapchat. And that's mostly because I don't know how to do it.
You don't know?
It's, technology has passed me by. I don't, I don't understand how it works. But yeah, that's the, that's, that's all I have. Looking forward to next week. I can't wait. I can't wait. Good stuff.
Okay, let's see, any public comment?
No.
All right. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. And the first item on our action item is the Chesapeake Public Charter School renewal. Ms. Dr. Kelly Hall, Ms. Funya, Ms... Okay, so Dr. Hall, I'm doing that. Does anyone on the board for the, because there's three different documents loaded in. One is the presentation and then the other two are the contracts and the adjustments that we made during the informational session at the last meeting. Does anyone have any changes on any of those?
Nope.
All right. Just wanted to see, so then that way we don't, if we had to discuss anything, we could do it directly after your presentation if we needed to. Okay.
So, good evening and thank you for the opportunity to be here. As you know, adjustments were made as discussed and agreed upon during the August 14th Board of Ed meeting. Mrs. Mancini has those corrected copies. I believe that you've seen them with language that everyone mutually agreed upon. So tonight, we are requesting approval of the Chesapeake Public Charter School five-year contract renewal effective today through 2024. The Chesapeake Charter School Alliance board members are here this evening. We have our chairperson, Mary Beth Nauman, sitting here with me, our vice chair, Roberta Sola, our treasurer, Shannon Norris, and our secretary, Kristy Ali, and then other members, Richard Carey, Johnny Cook, Kevin Emerson, Mike Kanter, Adam Malish, Colby Nelson, and Donna Pudrier. Would you all please stand? And then any other just friends or teachers or support that was I. Thank you for being here.
Thank you so much for coming out today. Thank you, thank you.
So our requested recommended action is that the Board of Ed would approve this agenda item as presented.
Any questions?
No questions.
No, this has been a long process, but I think now we've finally come to something that we can all agree on, so thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams.
Congratulations.
Mrs. Washington, you were, you didn't have the benefit of the information session, so I didn't have you any questions.
No, I didn't. I read everything. I'm so glad you're still here. A lot of charter schools fail and you have not. You're very successful. You work collaboratively with the board so that we can keep you as the premier charter school in the state of Maryland.
I do.
And probably on the East Coast. But thank you so much. Kathy and I were here in the beginning when we were looking for locations way, way back from the beginning all the way to now. So thank you for your success and I think it's really good what you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think that, that history is helpful because as there were things that came up in that agreement, people go, where did this come from? I, you know, I, I was able to go, well, you know, that came about because of this or that. I think it's a strong agreement. I'm really pleased and thrilled that this one is going through for five years because of the success that you've demonstrated. Then we are allowed to go for a five-year contract rather than, or a five-year agreement rather than the four that we've done in the past. So congratulations. Keep up the good work. Looking forward to it. I think the work we put into it will pay dividends in the end. And as I said two weeks ago, really what we were striving for is none of us are, you know, believe that we'll, we'll be here forever. And making sure that the agreement is something that will carry on and allow that continued success, I think we all felt was really important. And I think the work that we put into that even at the last minute really ensures that it is a strong agreement and the, the vision that you have can be carried through as, and the accountability that we all need is also there through this. So thank you for being patient with us and for, you know, us getting through this process. I'm, I'm excited. So congratulations to you all.
Okay. And with that, may I have a motion for the recommended action item?
I move that the Board of Education approve the five-year contract renewal for the Chesapeake Public Charter School as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. So congratulations. Thank you very much. So since you guys don't have to hear about the code of conduct or our budget transfer, we're going to sign the contracts and then take a brief recess to have a picture and then we'll go on with the meeting. So then that way...
Is Mrs. Williams in there?
Because we will...
I would just like to say thank you again to your board as a support, but then also I have to say, and I said this at the previous meeting, but I feel like I cannot say it enough, I've just been so impressed with the administration and then every step of the way going through that process, Kelly Hall, really helping us through that process. Without that, we really would not be where we are today. So thank you so much for that. And then again, I would also like to thank really the community that we have, of the board members, of the families, of the teachers that are here, that are here to support us. We certainly have a great community and it's because of them. So thank you all for coming out and supporting us. We certainly appreciate it. And really, it's about the kids, right? And the kids, thank you for the opportunity to have a choice in education. So thank you for that.
I think it was especially interesting that you brought up Professor Click.
Yes.
Since, since he was, you know, one of the founding members and Rosie was there and so it's been fun to watch, watch him go through school.
Kelly signed all three, yes.
All right, so Dr. Hall is in charge of the arrangement of said photo. That was the...
So I'm coming back to my first grade roots. We're gonna bunch up like grapes.
Bunch of like grapes.
All right, we can start moving while Scott has a sign.
Let's do a couple. Let's put the governing board up here with the Board of Ed and then the whole community. Is that okay? And I'll tweak that up.
Yeah.
So we need to move $26,694 into that category. And if you recall, within the fixed charges category, we actually budget for accrued compensated absences. So we'll be reallocating the funds from that category. So with that, we're requesting your approval of this budget adjustment and then it would be submitted to the county commissioners for their categorical approval as well.
Does anyone have any questions?
No more questions.
No questions.
Okay. Just want you to, all right, so with that, may I have a motion for this recommended action item?
I move that the Board of Education approve the presented categorical budget adjustment for FY 2019 and approve submittal of this budget adjustment to the commissioners of St. Mary's County for their approval as required by the annotated Code of Maryland.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. All right, Ms. Long, student code of conduct update.
Okay, good evening.
Good evening.
I'm here to talk to you about the student code of conduct revision specifically for Code 204, which is tobacco or tobacco use, which also includes e-cigarettes. Use of e-cigarettes, or commonly known as vaping, has dramatically increased over the past two years. We have heard nationally, certainly it has in our state of Maryland, in our county, but definitely in our schools. Certainly, we're concerned for the health risks that are associated with that. The Centers for Disease Control tell us that vaping is unsafe for kids, teens, and young adults. It may, it may contain nicotine and cancer-causing chemicals. It can harm brain development and harm parts of the brain that control attention, learning, mood, and impulse control. And certainly, that's a cause for concern when we're thinking about students being educated in our classrooms who are then using these e-cigarettes or vaping. And it also may increase risk for future addiction to other drugs. This here is just a screenshot of the website for the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention. And I just wanted to call this to your attention and to the attention of our parents and students as well because it contains a lot of important information that they can refer to for e-cigarettes and vaping. It's important to know about recent legislation effective October 1st. The minimum age to purchase tobacco products raises from 18 to 21 years, to 21 years of age. And this also includes electronic smoking devices and accessories, which reinforces the fact that vaping is against the law for our students and is not permitted on school grounds, on campus, or school-sponsored activities, or on buses. Certainly with vaping, we are always, always educating our students. It's so important that we educate them as to the health risks of vaping. The ongoing education happens in health classrooms through the health curriculum, not just about the tobacco use, but discussions on use of e-cigarettes and vaping. We have presentations during one lunch. And also, the Department of Student Services is working along with the Department of Safety and Security and the Health Department to consider ongoing activities, not just for students, but for parents as well. In the secondary handbook presentations, they were recently updated to include not only information on the health risks of vaping, but also on the response to vaping through the code of conduct changes. So that's in there as well. And those handbook presentations are, can be accessed on our Student Services website. They will be shown to students the first week of school, most often the first days of school. And there is a handbook presentation not just for secondary students, but for parents as well. And that information is in both of those presentations. And as far as our response to, to vaping, the Department of Student Services, myself, we developed, developed a letter to send home to parents and that was distributed to all the high school principals. It will be on our website as well. But the letter, in the letter, it has information on the new legislation. It has data from the 2016 Youth Risk Behavior Survey. It has vaping information from the Centers for Disease Control. And it also has the changes to the new code, to the code of conduct in there as well. And like I said, that will be sent home to parents via school messenger, through email and communications from the principals to the parents, and also reviewed with students. And then the other response is the revised code of conduct, which I will get to in just a moment. What I do want to share with you is a public service announcement on vaping, and I believe you have seen that, from the students for the, from the superintendent's leadership, the Slackers Leadership Council.
Yep.
And I do want to share that with you. It's just a very short video.
Hey, man, you gotta try this.
Man, I don't know if I should.
It won't hurt you, man. Just do it. Start.
So what we do appreciate with this is, you know, it's a very quick, short message, right to the point, but it's students talking to students, you know? So sometimes that makes a greater impact than adults trying to send a message. So we do appreciate that. With the revised discipline code for 204, as I said, the revision is, if you look at level one through three, using and possession of tobacco e-cigarettes, we added first-time offense. So it's clear that level one through three is for the first-time offense. Level one through three, at all levels, we're continuing to educate. I really want to make that known that we're always educating our students about the health risks and the importance of not... that we're always, uh, educating our students about the health risks and the importance of not using these e-cigarettes. Level four, um, is repeated use in possession of tobacco and e-cigarettes and that's new at a level four. Level four does include suspension. In level one through four distribution, there is no changes to that. That was cited, um, as level one through four before. Also, uh, it is now, uh, required that we, um, notify law enforcement for any of these, um, incidents. Certainly important to communicate the changes to our students and our community as well. Uh, we did a, I did a presentation to all administrators at our back-to-school administrator meeting for all administrative staff. And then the principals took that back to their school staff and shared that as well. Uh, in our back-to-school presentations for students via the handbook presentations, it will be shared. Again, the letter that is being sent out to, um, parents and shared with students. We are putting information on the Student Services website for parents, not only the letter, but also links to information like the Centers for Disease Control and the Health Department that has also, that has, uh, additional information for parents. And we use school mess, the principals use school messenger to get out that information as well. Any questions?
So, where will the PSAs be displayed?
They are, well, they are on our YouTube channel. I know that. And then-
YouTube, Twitter, Instagram, Facebook.
Right, okay.
Pretty much the, the-
I know in high schools, especially at Leonardtown, there's LTV where it's like a little, like, news show. And if you got permission from them to like put it on there, then that'd be a good idea. Or there's like even TVs throughout high schools that they could like play the PSAs.
That's a great idea. Thank you. I appreciate that. Yeah, it's a great idea. Yeah.
So, I know, um, and I know that you changed it under level four. I think you had continuous use or-
Persistent, right.
Persistent, that was what it was. And you changed it to repeat it, but I want to make sure that it's clear that the repeat is number two time.
You're right. You are right.
Okay. But I just want to make sure that's clear to everyone. The second time is a repeat.
Yes. So, i- and you're exactly right. Students, like I said, students are hearing it when they come back to school in their handbook presentations. We're getting a letter to parents. Um, you know, that, we are, we are putting a lot of information out there, you know. So, it is, the second time is the repeat.
And I do know that just the other day, there was their first reported case of a e-cigarette death.
Yeah.
So, and then there's, uh-
They're tracking several hundred cases of-
Yeah, there's over two hundred at this point that they're, they're, I guess, monitoring. But, yeah, the other day was the first reported death from the e-cigarette with vaping. So.
Yeah, scary.
Um, Ms. Long, um, how do you enforce this? Is, is, uh, my first question is, I may be showing my ignorance, but do you have the authority to go into a, a locker of, of a student?
No one uses lockers?
Can you have the authority to go in?
If, if there's cause, we can, yeah, to search.
They don't have lockers?
They don't use lockers anymore.
No, a lot of them, yeah.
You have to choose to rent a locker for the year if you choose not to do so.
Okay.
But, I mean, to, so here, so Jim, just, I'm gonna jump in, just, I mean, part of the problem is, is that the devices are so small, they look like thumb drives. So, like, in my daughter's class, they'll sit there and they'll clip it on their, well, you can tell me too. They can sit, they'll clip it on their thing and then they'll sit there and vape during class.
Right, right.
And then they can't, then they have to drink water because they, if not, they have like this incredible coughing fit because they can't exhale and get it out of their system. So, um-
Yeah, the concern is in the classrooms. You know, it's not hidden in lockers or, it's happening in classrooms and the bathrooms. I mean, we see it. It's there.
Yeah, I, I guess, uh, what I'm saying is, uh, you, you, you can make all the laws you want. Okay, you gotta be 21, you know. But enforcement, to me, seems to be paramount. Maybe the teachers have to be more vigilant, uh, in identifying, uh, a particular problem. And so, I, I guess, I guess my question is, maybe you answered it. Is there a concerted effort on the part of school administrators and teachers to be able to, uh, to monitor the students to see that they, they, they're not cheating?
Well, as, right, and as with all behaviors, really. I mean, that, you know, that's part of our, our job is we monitor students' behavior. So, with, you know, vaping, e-cigarettes with anything, really, that, um, absolutely.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Because we saw a lot of, um, I shouldn't say a lot, but we, with the emails that come through of, uh, of a concern when one of the administrators puts it in the system, because it'll show up on our emails.
Yeah, the Cognos reports that we get, the number of students who've been caught juuling, um, or using e-cigarettes. They, it got to a point in the last year where, um, we were getting multiples in a day at times.
Yeah, right.
I mean, my, to, to your point, Jim, I, I think everyone in the school is diligent in trying to stop it. But I think it is so convenient and the pods are so tiny.
Easy to hide.
And they're so easy to hide that you can, you can vape and take a hit and stuff it in your pocket and no one, especially like when you're walking down the hallway. If you're walking in a hallway where there isn't a teacher or an administrator, you can vape the whole way down that hallway and no one would see a thing. So, it's, because they're, they're, and they, they just keep getting smaller and smaller. It's not like the long, it's not like the long one that's this big that started like a couple of years ago. So, that's, that's the challenge. So, my guess is all the administrators are gonna be absolutely overrun within the first few weeks of school with the new tier level of responses.
Well, I'm impressed with your knowledge of vaping.
I have a daughter in high school. I can, you know, and I hear it every day. Right, right. Like, I mean, Spanish class, they all vape. Like, you know, I mean, I can, I can tell you. So, middle school, it was, they would hide them in the ceiling tiles, uh, you know, at the middle school. So, they, yeah.
Their kids, they find ways.
That's right.
They do.
I think a lot of it's gonna come down to like, we're at, uh, peer pressure with the, the announcements and, and things like that.
Yeah, I, I agree. Yeah, I think that's important.
Because I think that's really the only way you're gonna, you know, really get a handle on it.
But now, just, so I can just say, when, I think now that the students are a little bit more self-policing, um, in some areas of, you know, of the day and of the school than I think what they were before. So, you know.
Yeah, I would agree.
So.
Thank you for what you're doing. I think what we're trying to do here is educate the parents and the students to the risk and, um, uh, of vaping and tobacco products. And I like the approaches that you're using. I like the public service announcements from the students, students to students, um, explaining it. I think that's really good. Thank you, Dr. Mar, uh, for working with the students to do those PSA announcements. And, and they are, they are really great. So, we're doing all we can do. And so, we have to work together, parents and school and community, so that we can keep our students from hurting themselves because we don't know the full outcome of this yet. There's been a death, but we don't know the long-term consequences of vaping. We know it about tobacco, but vaping, you, students don't know what they're getting, you know. So, we have to do the best that we can and we are working together with the Health Department, educating the teachers, parents, and community members. We can, um, do the best we can. Then students make choices. And hopefully, they will make wise choices because not all the time do they make good choices. But we're doing everything we can to ensure that they make a good choice to stay away from something that can harm their brain and, um, their learning, their attention, their mood, and their impulse. So, thank you.
Um, I, I would like to see us extend a little bit. You talk about the information provided by the Center for Disease Control and Prevention and the, the cancer-causing chemicals and the brain development and so forth. But Mrs. Weaver is right. As a, you know, as a former critical care nurse, this is really, I, I can't stress this enough. The fact that a twenty-year-old can be out hiking one day and then because of vaping, the next day wind up on a ventilator in an intensive care unit because of the damage that's being done, that they don't yet understand why it's happening. But it's now been reported in over 22 states. There are, um, hundreds of kids, and I say kids, uh, you know, twenty-year-olds, um, and-
Most of them is between seventeen and, I think, twenty-eight.
Yeah. Um, and so, um, for us, for a kid to understand what it means to be intubated on a ventilator, having a machine breathe for you in an intensive care unit, um, I will just tell you, it's extreme. And I, it's one thing to say this could harm your brain. That's sort of a nebulous concept, I think, to a lot of kids. I think saying to a parent, this is, this is almost like you've sent your new driver off to school for the very first time and they're in a horrendous accident. The difference is that with vaping, if you know your kid is vaping or you can find out your kid is vaping, you can put a stop to it. I don't want to see us have to ramp up and say to kids, if you're caught, we're gonna take your driving privileges away. We're not gonna allow you to park at school. But I think that i- if it comes to it, that is a step I would ask that this board have to entertain. I don't want to, but I know kids well enough to know you have to, um, approach them where it's going to be really meaningful. And I'm not sure what the most meaningful way is to get it across. But I think it's a conversation we may come to have to have. So, um, I would, I would ask that we-
Alright, yeah.
-contemplate that, um, if it were to come to it.
Loss of school privileges is a level one response.
Yeah, there's, I mean, there's, there's a, there's a great deal of flexibility to how individual schools can, can, you know, address this. This is an absolute engineered epidemic targeting youth. Juul is, and it's, it is absolutely being targeted towards youth. Some of their advertisement goes out of its way to show a teenager saying, "Oh, mom, it's just a flash drive." They'll be litigated against. It'll happen five to 10 years down the road and there'll be a gigantic settlement and there'll be all these people that have irreparable lung damage. I mean, it'll be basically the opioid of the 2020s as to where we are now. There's, they've already started a couple of lawsuits and they'll, they'll gain traction as more and more, more and more young people are able to trace back their ailments directly to this. Keep in mind that you can smoke cigarettes for decades before you see the impact.
Right.
You know, you, you, they're seeing demonstrable impact from juuling after, you know, a, an incredibly abbreviated amount of time. That's not even to address the fact. This is the legal, the, the, the jewels that are actually by the manufacturer and put in. There are also opportunities for kids to use e-cigarettes and put all kinds of other things in them, including things that are laced with THC and who knows what else. And so, a child who's used to the bubblegum flavored Juul and it's really fun says, "Oh, well, I have, you know, well, here, try this." And, and there you are. It is an absolute epidemic. We are gonna do everything we possibly can to educate everybody, especially the parents.
Yeah.
Especially the parents because they need to go into bedrooms and they need to take this stuff away from kids and also then the children. And then we're gonna do everything we can to curb, to include loss of privilege and definitely, you know, loss of privilege such as driving to school. If that's what gets you there, then that's what needs to be, that's what needs to be done. Um, and suspension out of school. We have, we have to do everything we possibly can. And so, we will.
Thank you for bringing it forward. I'm sorry. It's a conversation we have to have.
I am as well.
Somebody has to have it.
Yeah.
It shall be us.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anyone from the board have anything else?
Don't vape. Please don't vape.
All right. The next board meeting will be on Wednesday, September 11th at 9:00 AM.
Can't wait to see you all Tuesday morning.